Okay.
No, yes, the company's not, Jennifer, comedy, you know.
She's trying to attend virtually, I sent her the WebEx information.
Okay.
She's out of town.
Go ahead and get started, start the guy, go on.
Still dirty.
I'll call me to order and we'll have everybody here, we'll have three public hearings this evening and be interesting for all y'all to speak if you'd like to. We're starting to have form, what's your pleasure on the minutes from last meeting and public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, real quick, if you could note the amended agenda.
Okay. All right, we will have amended agenda, item three on the sheet in front of you. Also, the amendment should be in a packet. What will be doing is changing the zoning to a special use permit on Monday. Anything else, anyone else like to add?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, second motion made and second approval of the minutes, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor making an O S A and I, all opposed, same side, motion carries. Moving on to old business, this is a reselling request of the Dutch Gap Grill LLC. I wanted to play in community district, we had the public hearing last time. So we will not have any speakers from the floor. You want to bring us up today on that, I think the main concern last time was we won't like the two roads and possibly sidewalk.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. Fire till giving you a little background, the applicant is here, the individual who represented the applicant last time, Miss Emily Hazel is here. That can, she can probably provide a little bit more detailed information, but over the past month or so, their engineering consultants have with Kimberly Horn have worked with VDOT on this proposed conceptual plan. They have submitted this plan to staff today, it's showing a stub that would go towards the west side of the property. As Mr. Wilkerson, the VDOT representative that attended the meeting last month stated, the state to accept maintenance of the roadways, they either needed to have a second entrance or a stub that could potentially be developed into an entrance in the future. And so they've worked with VDOT to develop this and then submitted to, submitted it to us. Upon submission, I of course followed up with VDOT, but have not gotten an official transmittal letter from them at this point. But I do know that their consultant worked directly with Adam Wilkerson on this plan. It does reduce the unit, potential unit count from fifty-one to forty-nine. So it's a little bit less units per acre, two minutes, uh, two minutes less than total. About point one something units less per acre, but it does achieve that necessary requirement for state maintenance. I believe the applicant is working with the property owner on an easement that is abutting that area. That would allow them to, to develop that into a second entrance, but also to potentially run a sidewalk through that area. Now, that's about all the information I have, but if you have any questions that I don't have any information on, I know Miss Emily would be willing to, to try to answer them.
Who owns that property, did you stuff it up to?
Uh, DC Tire is my understanding.
You have anything else to add, Emily?
Uh, so we have, we are in negotiations with Tripp and Dusty who own the tire shop. And they're very agreeable to, you know, a ten-foot easement for a sidewalk, which is excellent, that, that makes way more sense than, than doing it down Dunn Street to Five Forks. We are working with them on potential, you know, for, for a fifty-foot easement for vehicular access as well as the sidewalk. But we haven't finalized anything on that yet, but like I said, the sidewalk is, is very promising, I feel pretty confident about that. Vehicular access is, is something we're still working on because of, uh, it's a larger portion of their property that would, you know, be used, so.
Remember, have any other questions, Emily, while she's up there? Thank you.
Thanks.
Committee members recommend or think we need to do? We got either pass it on or turn it down. We held it off thirty days for a meeting, I've been a little over thirty days. I rode through a development similar to this in Lexington on the weekend, I was up there for a wedding. Wasn't as bad as I thought it might be. It was well kept, but the lots I'd say were very similar in size. But I guess the major request we were wanting last time was the roads and also state maintenance instead of community maintenance.
I'll make a motion within the next two to five seconds.
Any stipulations one way or the other?
No, it looks like they're going to take our concerns to heart, so.
Not happy about some of this excess of stuff not being, it seems it works. Should we have it in?
It's not, it's not really done, I mean, I think, I think we're, we'd be approving it before all the bugs got worked out.
That's what I'm saying, could you put it in the motion? Our concerns and let the board supervise, they can table it a whole lot longer than we can till those concerns are taken care of. I mean, we'd amend the motion.
Yes, it's a motion.
I know, can't amend it, hadn't been seconded yet. Oh, Mike is seconding. But you want to amend it to state the concerns on the road?
That pedestrian and vehicle access is established.
Yeah, that's what he said.
Mr. Chairman.
I, I know what you had, that's why I have to say it. From a broader perspective, I'm, I'm kind of with, I'd like to see it right before it, it comes up, because all we, we go ask the same question.
But can, we'd have, we'd have to deny it.
Yep.
Before y'all, and then it'd be y'all's.
Answered, well, I can't defer another thirty days.
If you could do another thirty days.
Yes, sir, because it was heard last meeting.
Oh, we have.
Yeah, we've seen like days, but I.
Well, we've got a motion on the floor, we have to kill it. Refend it and then get another motion. What's your pleasure on the first motion?
I just want to discuss on the motion.
Huh?
I want to discuss on.
Okay.
Discussion on the board. These are some really good improvements and and, you know, they're in the works and so I, I think it really makes sense to allow that to continue to develop and know where we are and as our supervisor representative has said that that helps the supervisors. And so I'm, I'm you know, I'm, I'm, I'm encouraged that there are enough improvements here and I thought that, that there would be. And so I'm going to speak against the motion because I think we should defer for another thirty days and have it more developed.
All right, motion on the floor and second, you can pull a motion or we can debate the motion.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, just to make sure everybody's clear. The, it, it, as is proposed, the easement, the state maintenance would not be contingent on the easement according to VDOT. So they wouldn't need that solidified easement, they just, the development would just have to have a stub for state maintenance. Our subdivision ordinance, any development with fifty, with, sorry, with more than fifty lots, so fifty-one plus, we require two entrances, fifty or less, we only require one entrance. Now, that has shifted a little bit to match VDOT because VDOT's recent updates is where they're now requiring any new subdivisions to have two points of access or the stub. Whereas previously, like Maplewood Forest, for example, has one point of access on Mount Zion Road with two cul-de-sacs, and that's a state, that's, was accepted into their system, but that's under prior, so technically, just to make sure that that's clear, the easement contingency is not something that would be needed for code requirements, whether that be VDOT's code or our code. Now, I don't have VDOT's official transmittal letter, so I would caution that by saying, until we get their official transmit, middle letter, we can't put that stamp. But just working with VDOT, Mr. Wilkerson, and then knowing our code, it doesn't, it wouldn't technically require the two accesses for code approval, you see what I'm saying? But having that stub was important to VDOT, knowing that at a future date it could potentially be developed.
Let me ask a question from the board standpoint, if the motion is with the amendment for pedestrian and vehicle access, right? So if we approve it with, with that amendment and those are addressed by time it gets to the board, does that answer the questions or is it better off to?
That would help.
Or would you rather? Maybe to next month and see what comes about, about that. As far as the board, I'm sure you'd rather have it as clear cut as possible when it came to y'all.
The question is, is the VDOTs, they gonna take over the streets?
For state acceptance.
That is probably the biggest concern, but we gone away with private roads.
Yeah.
As long as we got very good assurance, VDOTs will take these roads. And that's the letter you're still waiting on.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
I have some issues with the pedestrian traffic, if they put young folks in these houses, which I'm sure this, when we start our house with a lot of people, then they're going to have children, they're going to have some kids, and the kids are going to, they're going to want to go to not a general or somewhere that are good to, to, or, and unless they put some sort of pedestrian traffic sidewalk or something, and I don't mean a curb and gutter concrete sidewalk, you could add four feet of pavement. I was in North Carolina last week in the town we were in, then their sidewalks were four feet of pavement added to the road with a line painted on each side. And that was for pedestrians and bicycles. And so, so, but, you know, having pedestrian traffic go out the back, I'm fine with that, but it's not set in stone. If we're putting it right now, all they're wanting to get three something done, if we approve that now, it, it may never happen. I mean, it needs to be established now, the second, and the second access for me is more of a safety issue. And from, for the fire department and people like that, if we have a fire in there, we're going to block that road going in. And nobody's going to get in or out, and it needs a second entrance, emergency entrance.
More discussion on the motion. Heard the concerns. Motion been made and amended and second. Hearing no more discussion, I will call for a question. All in favor of the motion as it stands, which states passing on to board supervisors with the amendment of the road concern. Roughly what it speaks.
But that was vehicle and pedestrian.
Vehicle and pedestrian. Any questions on what we voted on? All in favor of that motion, making known by saying aye? All opposed, same side. All right, can I get a hand? All in favor of the motion, making known by raising a hand. All those opposed in motion, raise a hand. That's five to four. That the motion would carry. Now, Jennifer would speak, she on and do you know?
Jennifer, I think you'll have lines.
All right. Will it be passed on with that amendment to the board supervisors? All right. Move it on to the next immortal business, anyone knows of. Moving to new business. First is a special exemption, special exemption request from David Dean's attached dwelling unit. Gets a second house for a mother-in-law, age of mother-in-law. You want to speak to that, Brady?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Dean's has, uh, Mr. David Dean's, uh, was out in that on Rock Castle Lane at one zero six seven zero Rock Castle Lane, has requested a special exception permit for detached dwelling unit. The tax map numbers, tax map forty-five dash ten H, down Rock Castle Lane is a private road that comes off of it, and he lives off of that private road, uh, a good ways back down the private road. In your agenda packet is a survey that shows his property off of, uh, the private Rock, Rock Castle Road, and it also depicts the approximate location of where he would like to put this second dwelling, and then also it depicts his existing house, the existing accessory structure he has, his existing drain field and well, and then the proposed drain field area to the west of the proposed dwelling location. The property is about seven point three seven acres, um, and as you stated, Mr. Chairman, this dwelling unit would be for a disabled parent that would move into the, onto the property. At this point, I will clarify that he's not submitted documentation on exactly the type of house that he would like to ultimately construct. I'm not sure if he's made any progress there in his thought process, or just sort of waiting for this process before he initiates any sort of planned development on that. Mr. Dean's is in attendance this evening and, and would be, I'm sure, willing to answer any questions you may have for him that I, that I wouldn't be able to answer.
Mr. Dean, you come forward.
Good evening.
Evening. Is this lot going to be surveyed off as a separate?
No, no, sir.
It'll all be under, under one.
Yes.
Flat, not remit. I have a question I have, what would be the intention of the house upon the death or having to move into assisted living? Would you be using the house for that you know of?
Um, my parents are seventy-seven and seventy-eight, so sooner or later one, one of them is probably going to be, you know, I guess coming there too, so.
I assume this is your mother's or your wife's? Right, one way or the other.
Yes.
Anyone else have questions?
This is sort of your back end on that private section of.
One, two, three.
Further access off of the private road.
Okay.
Well, no, actually three.
Okay, the reason I ask it because we passed something several years ago to go in line with the VDOT, saying you can't have more than five residents on the same easement or private road. We passed this point down.
I know that there's no more than three lots per easement, which would restrict Mr. Dean's from doing a, accessing a family cut, even though he has the kind of acreage required.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for y'all for public hearing?
I guess only thing is later down the road after, you know, what would happen after the fact, you know, later if somebody else boarded or whatever.
That was a question that was leading to. Since it will have only one address for that property.
It should be just that, together.
Any other questions for open for public hearing? Hearing none, I'll open for public hearing to speak for or against Mr. Dean's request for adding a house for his mother. Anyone like to speak for or against Mr. Dean's request? Anyone like to speak? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Back to the mission members, what's your request to the board to write? My only concern was down the road. What's the seventy-seven, dead ninety-one, they want to some more years, I mean, I'll be long gone. So I mean, that, that's a chance.
Well, we've put restrictions on it before, right, if you got a second dwelling, it, it property sold or whatever else, it has to come back here or?
Have to come back, have to be soon before he could rent it for a half to somebody that almost had to be in a separate flat.
The, the permit runs with the property, so if you all tonight make a recommendation for conditions and then the board approves permit with those said conditions, those conditions would run with the permit, which would run with the property. So if an activity at some point changed, we have a, uh, a special exemption master file, I'm sorry, special exception master file where you can research properties that have them and what they got it for and then what conditions were placed with it. That could be referred to, it would be an enforcement thing at that time, like if staff was made aware that there was another use being used on the property, then we would have to, of course, go back, research the master list, see what the conditions were, and then contact the property owner to address any violations that may exist or any, uh, use not approved with the said conditions.
But at that time, could it be split off, is what I'm asking.
So he's, this, this, because of that private road, unless that road becomes state maintained, those lots on that road are pretty much tapped out. There's, there's not going to be any more splits because of the no more than three lots per one easement. I don't know if you remember, it was a, I think it was Mr. Capps, Billy Capps on, is that Pine Ridge Drive? Had a similar issue a couple of years ago where they're, they're, that road is tapped out as a private road, and I think he got, he requested a detached dwelling permit.
What's your pleasure?
Like a motion that we approve it with the restriction that if it becomes not a dependent family member living there, it has to be surveyed off into another lot or the dwelling has to be removed.
I'll second that.
The motion been made and second, any questions on the motion? Any questions or comments on the motion? All in favor of the motion, making known by saying aye? All opposed, same side, motion carried. Uh, next special exception request is from the county department of emergency management, wireless towers in excess of eighty feet. You want to bring us up a little bit on that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the planning commission. Amelia County Emergency Management is requesting a special exception permit for two wireless towers, what we, our ordinance considers wireless support structures in excess of eighty feet. One of these will be located on the north side of Patrick Henry Highway, right at the intersection of Genito and Soapstone Road at the convenience center, that's right there on Soapstone Road. The address there is seven seven six one South Genito Road. It's tax map thirty-seven dash forty-seven A on the property identification map, it's zoned A five and it's located in the rural preservation area. The second tower would be located, uh, right here in the village at the intersection of Virginia Street and Dunn Street, uh, at the Amelia, uh, County Emergency Operations Center, uh, the building that's just down the street here. Uh, it would be located to the rear of the building, that property is zone B one, and of course, it's located in the Village Development Area. This project is for the dispatch radio system update that the county is completing in collaboration with Motorola. You, you all probably heard about this project, it's been working on it for some time, it's also was one of the projects in the capital improvement plan. It was the two point eight million dollar project that was funded this year in the CIP for FY twenty-four. Uh, or the second half of it was funded. There are representatives here from Motorola and CTA, um, they are going to provide some further information. It's a lot more technical than I can give information and insight on. And they do have a presentation, and if you all would like, I could just hand it over to them and let them do a presentation to really give you guys a full overview.
I'd like to hear that.
All right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing us some time this evening, we do have a presentation, we're going to walk you through what we're asking for, and I think probably even more importantly, why we're asking for that. Thank you. All right, so I'm going to introduce who's here, because we have quite a few people here, so hopefully we can answer any possible question that you might have. And then we're going to talk about the why, why do we need this exception for our radio system? And we'll talk a little bit about the radio design, so you can get a really good, clear picture of what it is we need to do for your county to give you a good communication system. And then the where, you already heard a little bit from Brady as to where, but we're going to give you some really nice pictures as well, so that you can see, have a good visual of what we're doing. And then the impact, because we know that's so very important, especially in the village, but certainly everywhere in your county, that we're very mindful of the impact that we're having on you and your citizens, and think what a failure might look like, you know, in our world, these towers very, very seldom ever fail. But there are times, right, a natural disaster or something, so we want to make sure we accounted for that and share with you what could possibly happen. So, we're from CTA Communications, my name is Cheryl Jaggs, I've been doing this for over thirty years, helping public safety, um, build new communication systems, and oftentimes we come in when these communication systems are really old, which is what you're experiencing now, and they're starting to fail. And, you know, you've had a number of failures over the last couple of years, so we And, you know, you've had a number of failures over the last couple of years, so we spent some really good time speaking with your users and finding out exactly what they need. And I have with me a couple of representatives. I have Rachel Sauer, who's one of our project managers. She's been working with your users and with Kent for the last, oh, about a year and a half now. I also have Jeremiah Knowles, who's our engineer of record on this project, so they're here to answer any questions that you have. And we also have Motorola. We have Tom, who is their project manager, and Cole, who's their civil person. And I'm gonna let Eric introduce himself and his team in just a moment. So we just wanted to give you a really good, solid feeling that you've got a great team here and that we're, we know how important this is to you and we can answer all of your questions tonight. Okay, why? Why do we need to come before you tonight? Well, we need to put in a radio system. As I mentioned, you have radio systems now that are failing, and we're putting people out on the street, asking them to risk their lives to protect our property and and protect our health and protect just anybody who gets into trouble. But we're not protecting them. They need a communication system, so when they get into trouble, they can call for help, but also when someone calls nine-one-one. We need that dispatcher to be able to get out and talk to the people in the field and for them to be able to talk back and have that communications back and forth. So we're gonna be implementing a new Project Twenty-Five Public Safety Radio System. And the reason that Project Twenty-Five is so important is that it's a standards-based system, which fortunately for us allowed us to get a million-dollar grant from the federal government to help with this system. So it's really important that we're mindful, not only of all of the safety, but also of the financial resources that we can avail ourselves to. So this implementation is going to be a new system, and it's gonna give us coverage. If you see this map, such wonderful coverage, it's completely covered your entire county. So this is what your people can expect. They can expect coverage pretty much anywhere they go in this county, and that's with the portable radio. You know, back when I started in this industry, it was a mobile radio in your car, right? To kind of tether to your vehicle to be able to talk to dispatch or or be able to talk to someone else in the field that you might be working with. But now we have portable radios, so this coverage is gonna allow them to have that portable radio, be able to talk to each other. An EMS person can go into a home and still be able to talk to dispatch, which is critically important, or with the hospital, you know, and make sure that they're conveying the proper information. So that's just a really important piece to this, having that coverage. And that'll be very important as we continue on, but also this system's gonna last you for fifteen-plus years. So you're making an investment really in the critical infrastructure and your future here in the county. So, that coverage, for us to get that wonderful coverage that you just saw on the previous slide, we had to select sites. So Motorola has done a very comprehensive engineering study, and what they have decided is we need the following sites. We need a site on Cook Road, one at Ford, one at Soapstone, and we're gonna be using these stars, which is a Virginia State Police Tower. And that's a wonderful partnership, because that's also gonna save you money. It's an existing tower. We're gonna be able to go in their shelter, so we're doing everything we can to maximize all of your resources. But then we also need the emergency management, and you see how all of these sites are linked together? We call that a ring, which is really, really important for us, our back hall. What that means is if any one link were to go down, this system still operates, so it's very, very redundant. It can turn around and go the other direction, so that's why all these sites positioned exactly where they are is very critical. First, for coverage, to make sure we cover your whole county, but second, to make sure that they're close enough that they can communicate with each other. But then you also see in the middle, that's your dispatch center, right? So that's why it's so critical that we have that site at the emergency, um, the EOC, because that way we can get from the EOC directly into our dispatch center, which completes all of our communications. That link will also be what we call a redundant link, so we'll still have that resiliency in our system. So now I'm gonna turn it over to Eric, and he's gonna explain to you all that they've gone through and some more details about each of the specific sites.
Good evening. I hope you all are well. My name is Eric Cole. I am gonna be the engineer of record for the infrastructure portion of this. Um, basically the site design, any kind of structural analysis that are needed on some of the existing towers, and ensuring that everything is gonna be within compliance with all the building codes, to include the Virginia State Building Code and any other local ordinances here within the county. Just a couple of things on there. I've done hundreds of public safety sites, um, all up and down the East Coast, many right here, many of your neighbors. I've been instrumental in the design of of many of those systems as well. Um, I am a member of the TR fourteen committee, which is the Committee for the Telecommunications Industry Association, responsible for all of the structural design codes for towers. And we have just gone through and more or less completed the new update, which is revision I of the standard. Um, so currently, we're using revision H of the TI two-two standard, which basically gives you your tower capacities and and those kind of things for, um, your infrastructure builds. Um, with me, and I'm gonna give her a brief introduction, she can remain in the background unless you have any questions, but Jennifer Grover is our archaeologist, so she's handling all of the historical and regulatory type processes for these two, uh, these two new sites. So the FCC, anytime you're gonna put a communications tower up, the FCC requires you to go through a very detailed environmental study to include the historical aspects. So she is currently working with the Virginia State Historic Preservation Office, as well as, um, the tribals, the FIPPO, which is a tribal historic preservation office, which is a federal agency. Um, so she's going through those processes, working with the US Fish and Wildlife to make sure there's no endangered species, plants, et cetera. Um, so she is gonna be completing that portion, and that is underway. It's a very lengthy process. There's a lot of back and forth between various organizations. So there's not really a a set update that one can give, other than at this moment in time, we have no objections, which is always a good thing. So the first site we're gonna talk about is the Emergency Management Building, which is the one that's, uh, basically right down the road from us. So this site, we're looking at a hundred fifty-five-foot monopole tower. And one of the reasons why it's gotta be that tall is there is a nice field. Uh, one of the primary purposes of this is kind of twofold. Um, it's gonna be your prime site, which means it's gonna have the the primary communications flowing through there. But there is a microwave link that has to go to the sheriff's building on the hill. And I don't know if you've noticed, but there was a nice grove of trees, wonderful, beautiful, but we're gonna have to go over the top of those. So, um, so that's one of the big reasons for the, um, for the additional height requirements. Um, from a safety standpoint, this tower will fail within a hundred-foot fall radius, which means, and you'll see it on the next slide, we can go into a little more detail, which means basically that if it folds over, which it will, it's kind of like, if you can imagine a pole that just kind of kinks over on its side at the highest stress concentration, and currently that's at about the second level of the tower. Um, which means basically that everything will remain within that perimeter, if you will. Um, it's gonna have a small twenty-by-twenty fenced enclosure, which is primarily the, from a safety standpoint, again, to keep anybody off of the tower, so that no one can, you know, climb up there and injure themselves, those kind of things or damaging the equipment. The new equipment, the new radio equipment is gonna go inside of the op, emergency operations center itself in the basement. Um, so that's where that's gonna be kept. And the nice thing is with this location, there is no additional access required or parking. There's plenty of spaces for the one or two vehicles we're gonna have monthly that might have to do an inspection of the site. And we're also gonna piggyback off of the emergency operations generator there, so there's no additional proposed generator either. So this is kind of an overview of the site as a stance today. And if you can see the upper right-hand corner of the emergency operations center, which is basically in the center of the screen, that's where the tower is gonna go. So you can see it a little bit better on that picture. That circle that you see around there, that's basically encompassed by all of the main roads, that is that hundred-foot fall radius. So that tower is going to remain within that, and you should not have any issues. Um, but one of the things I really wanna demonstrate is these towers are designed for the same criteria, these emergency management, public safety towers, as you would a hospital. So we are using the highest risk category, risk category four, which is used, again, critical infrastructure, hospitals, et cetera, that in the worst storm, you want that thing to still be standing. Most communication towers are designed under a risk category two, which is, again, a couple of notches below, so if you can kind of envision, risk category two's got roughly a hundred fifteen miles per hour wind speed. The risk category four is is gonna be up there, a hundred twenty, a hundred twenty-five miles per hour. And when you start looking at forces developed, it's actually a square. So it's not simply, you know, a multiplication, hey, a hundred twenty is better than a hundred fifteen, it's a hundred twenty squared, which is, again, a much larger increase in the capacity of that structure. Um, as you can see there, the note on the bottom, um, we get, we're getting it absolutely as close as we can, because it's gonna have its own independent foundation. We have to make sure we're clear of the existing building, so that there's no interaction between the two foundations. This is just kind of a a better depiction of the site. Um, so again, you can see that small fenced-in enclosure, and you can see the existing generator up in the le, upper left-hand corner, and all the equipment's gonna go inside the building, roughly where you see, you know, kind of the little T. Um, that's the staircase that's going upstairs, and there's a closet on the backside of that. We're gonna basically be right in that corner area. This is a a rendering of the tower of what you'll see when it's out there. Um, the two antennas up at the top are your microwave antennas, so they'll be going as high as we can get them to make sure we clear any future growth from a tree standpoint, um, as well as your your P twenty-five antennas, which are also shown on the tower, getting those at a maximum height. Again, to assure that, um, public safety coverage. Any questions on the first site before I move into the second site?
Is there a particular, I'm sure there probably is, kidneys, like the tower on north side of three sixty on Cable Lane, I think it is?
Tower on north side.
Just, that was three hundred feet tall.
Uh.
That was three hundred feet.
Right, yeah, it's just north of the courthouse.
So this, this particular site has been chosen primarily because, number one, it's gonna house the the backup dispatch location, should anything happen to the primary location, which is the sheriff's building, the main dispatch. There is a dispatch council within the emergency operations center. And the other fact is, we're also looking at this to be the prime site, which means we have to have some sort of a tower there to be able to handle that. Uh, we do have, we are using the the VDOT tower, which you mentioned, which is right down the road as well, um, a little bit further, but this particular location has been chosen to maximize the use of the emergency operations center um, from that that prime standpoint.
I assume this is not gonna affect the ball field down below?
Absolutely not, absolutely not.
Listen, falls.
You know, make people worried about falling on them. Sky's gonna fall, sky's gonna fall.
If if there's a soccer game or a ballgame going on when it's a hundred and thirty mile per hour wind, I'm gonna see those guys out there playing.
And I assume that's far enough back from the church, be within a hundred feet of the church on the corner.
Yes, absolutely. The church is is well at range, and actually, this photograph, um, is is very close to that church entrance where this is actually taken. It's about right across the street from the abandoned building, the old school building.
Any more questions? All right, you move on.
So the next site is the one that we mentioned was gonna be at the, uh, um, the convenience center. And so this one's gonna be a two-hundred-forty-foot self-supported tower, so it's gonna be a little bit taller. Um, and it's gonna be, uh, you know, much, much further out in an area that's not quite as occupied. I mean, the center of the village here is definitely, you know, we wanted to make sure we had as as minimal an impact as possible. So this one's gonna be a little bigger. It's gonna have a hundred-by-hundred compound. Um, so that will allow eventual future colocations, should that, should that be a requirement. Um, but the other big thing is we're gonna be using a a shelter as well as a generator, and so that'll provide the, uh, uh, the backbone of that critical infrastructure in there. Um, I'm sorry, it's gonna be a fifty-by-seventy-five-foot compound. And this tower also, we're showing a hundred-foot fall radius. Uh, but this particular tower will have the ability to actually collapse on itself, and I'll show you a little bit about some of the failure modes a little bit further on. Um, but we are showing that hundred-foot fall radius, because that's really the worst case, um, that you'll find. The new equipment's gonna go inside of a communication shelter, which is a small, um, sixteen-by-twenty concrete building. And, um, and like I said, there'll also be a generator there. We're not looking for any driveway access. We'll access the site through the convenience center. And the parking is also gonna be, um, available within that convenience center area. So there's gonna be no new access roads, um, no additional impact from that standpoint. So this is what the site looks like today. And where we are looking is right in between the convenience center and the main road. There's kind of a grassy area. That's where we're looking at going up in that upper right-hand corner, if you will, and here's a better picture of that. So once again, you can see the hundred-foot fall radius. And this one, we also showed a further fall radius, which was what the prior zoning ordinance was, which was about a hundred and ten percent of the height. Um, and the reason we wanted to show that was to make sure that we were meeting all of those requirements at the time, because you can see a residential house. Um, a little bit further back on that property. So there'll be absolutely no, no concern whatsoever for that, um, for that residence. This is another view, just kind of a more graphical view. So you could kind of see the tower better in the center there, um, where the generator's going. And the access will be coming off of the, uh, convenience center. This is kind of a blow-up of the compound itself. So this room will have a propane generator, so there's propane tanks in the upper right-hand corner. Um, the propane is, allows the generator mo, run much cleaner, um, without generating a lot of, um, additional. The generator will run approximately once every month, just from a test standpoint, to make sure it's operational. Um, and typically, that'll be done, you know, during the day when, you know, most activity is happening. And, um, really minimal sound, they're very quiet generators. So I don't, I don't anticipate any kind of a sound impact.
Our GP pulling electricity off, lines are up in there now.
Exactly, so the only time that would ever kick in is is if they lost primary power, yep. Which unfortunately, in a hundred thirty mile per hour wind, that is possible. So, again, we want this site to be operational when, you know, the worst conditions are present. This is a rendering of that site. Um, this is basically standing down at the south entrance of that facility. So you can't really see the top of it, but you can see the majority of it. That's about a hundred eighty foot of the two-hundred-forty foot that would be visible right there, based on the tree heights. So one of the, one of the things that I did want to kind of elaborate on is the way that, the way these towers are designed is, again, they're not designed to fail, and I always have to make that my first, being a a civil structural guy. Um, it just wounds me whenever we have to talk about something not working. But the long story is short, is they, we design in a higher stress concentration of the tower, still under a hundred percent capacity, where, again, that risk category four wind high enough that what'll happen, high enough from an elevation standpoint, so what'll happen is when it hits that point, it causes the tower to fold over, as you see there. And once the tower folds over, and usually we like to be a little bit higher, and that way we can say it's a zero-foot fall radius. So if it's in the upper two-thirds of the tower, it'll basically fold over on itself and really never even hit the ground. Um, so in those particular instances, like I said, we we design it so that when it does fail, and once that happens, it takes a tremendous amount of load off the remaining structure. So you won't have a cascading failure, if you will. It'll just be one done, and then we So you won't have a, a cascading failure, if you will. It'll just be one done, and then we gotta go out there and probably in that particular case, replace the tower. But in some of the others, you know, you can actually, you know, reuse the, uh, the bottom portion, if you will. Um, the other item that I always like to address, because this is always one of those things that, you know, folks get nervous about, especially if the, if it happens to be in close proximity to where they're at, is the RF, the radio frequency exposure. All of these antennas are high enough on the structure that there is no issue from any kind of a, a radio frequency or an exposure type situation. Um, the lowest antenna you're gonna find on the monopole here is gonna be, you know, roughly hundred, hundred twenty feet up from the ground. So unless you were to climb up there and just kind of camp out in front, you know, you might have a problem after many hours or days. But if from a, a normal, everyday standpoint, there is no concern from any kind of radiation exposure. Um, and plus the wattage we produce is, is not nearly high enough. Now, when you get around an FM antenna or some of those others, they have a much higher wattage, so you can actually get RF burns. But again, you have to be in a very close proximity to those. One of the things that, um, we brought up, and this was not meant to be, um, you know, funny in any stretch of the imagination, but um, Brady mentioned that he, he was big on the four S's. So, you know, really, you wanna make sure that we're not impacting those areas, sight, sound, smell, and safety. Um, and I, I thought that was actually a very good acronym personally. Um, you know, so the largest impact you're gonna have from a site standpoint is obviously the visibility. You know, where people haven't seen a structure, there's a structure now. Um, and really, what we found is typically in about three months, it's just background. I mean, most people don't even notice the power poles that they walk by every day. You know, once they start seeing it over and over again. Um, sound, the generator will have some sound during the testing periods and of course, power outages. Um, but it has a very, very good housing. And so really, you, you might hear it within the convenience center. Really should not propagate much further from that point. Um, smell, we don't anticipate any kind of, um, you know, noxious vapors. It's a propane generator, so it really won't have a lot of fumes either, like a diesel might. Um, and of course, safety, we talked about the two primary, which was the fall radius and the, uh, RF exposure. I threw this slide up in case anybody had any questions about the environmental review. Those are some of the areas that they go over. Um, I do have Jennifer Grover here, who has been doing this, doing this portion much longer than I have. So, um, if you have any questions from, uh, environmental or historical. I may have to bring her up here just cuz she traveled a long way to get here.
It's a very intensive job. I'm, I'm from the Mon, originally, and we installed a hydroelectric plant on our property there, that originally had a copper mill with that green and stuff and whatnot there. And we turned it into a hydroelectric plant. And we had over a hundred different inspections uh, to satisfy all of these environmental concerns. And we had put in a fish ladder for salmon and all of that.
Thank goodness, we don't have to go to that extent, but, um, but anyway, if you guys do have questions, we did bring the subject matter expert with us. Going once, going twice. So I am gonna open it up. I've also got, um, Cheryl still by me. If you have any questions on the front end, is there anything else that we can answer for you?
Any questions? Two speaker?
What type of signals will be going out? Can other virtual applications would use the tower or will they, yeah?
Yeah, yes, the tower for the building, we could have commercial barrier if they chose to be on these towers. Um, you know, we'd just be very careful about it, right? You have to make sure there's no interference with the antennas up there, putting on one of our antennas, but that is certainly a possibility. We're already partnering at Substone, we're partnering with River Street, um, your broadband, um, organization, so they'll be coming into our shelter. So again, that'll be another area that we'll be able to be physically responsible on that particular compound.
You're not putting, you're not putting a generator down here, you go run up and down it.
We use the one that's already there.
Any other question? Now it's time to ask. I just think it'd be a mess if it did fall.
They, they, I mean, I, it, it took me forever to find those pictures, that picture I put up there because there really are not many towers that do fall. And if they do, there's usually some other, you know, they have some of the towers that are guy towers, and I'm sure you've seen them, they have guy wires that come down. That's probably one of the most prevalent ones. And typically what happens with those is somebody hits the guy wire. You know, and, and so there's not much holding the tower up at that point, so. Um, and these, these particular towers, that is not gonna be any kind of an issue, so.
Did you design these? Is your design?
Did I design these? Absolutely not. No, I'm just kidding. No, I, I actually, we, a manufacturer will design them because they'll be supplying the steel. Um, but I actually will be providing Brady with a fall letter that's gonna state, based on their design, we're gonna remain within those falls. So I am gonna put some, some skin in the game and take some personal ownership of that piece, but yeah, no, these, these will be well-designed.
Okay, so if it falls, we'll be, we'll be in touch.
Like I said, if that, if that happened, I wouldn't see the person down there in the ball field playing the games.
How do y'all set this tower? Can I accomplish?
Um, usually it's with a crane.
Crane that tower?
Yep.
We set it in segments.
What's that? Yeah, so self-supporting and, and even a, a guy tower, you know, like the fifteen hundred foot varieties, we can actually pull up segments and use what we call a gen pole. So you don't even need to actually even have a crane for some of those as well.
What type of town?
We'll send a text. Um, as soon as you all approve it, then add thirty day, no, I'm just kidding. We're, we're really hopeful to have the construction going before the end of the year.
And that's why it was so important for us to, to come here today and hopefully go to the board with your authorization at the next board meeting. Because one of the critical pieces to this is we have to do our coverage testing in full foliage. That means all the beautiful trees have to have all the leaves on them, because that's the worst case scenario for us having coverage. And so to do that, we need to get this process moving, get these sites filled out so that we can do that in the next, you know, late summer, autumn timeframe, cuz we really have a two-year schedule and we're hoping to sit with that.
Any other questions?
As the request exists now, once it's towers up, I don't guess they'll have to come back to get five G or just internet coverage.
No, cuz we're, we're doing RF coverage, so those antennas, the microwave antennas for our connectivity and the radio antennas, that's all that you will need um, for the foreseeable future. Now again, the, the towers will be starting up, that if you choose to have someone, you know, be on that tower, a, a commercial barrier, uh, that would certainly be your choice. They would have to go through this thing, boss, and that's right. And we would have to vet it to make sure it would not interfere with what we have on your tower.
Just a quick reminder, Jeremiah just stepped up behind me, so he can also assist in any kind of questions.
Sure, sure, got it. I just wanna make sure that you got the correct answer.
But the other point you, you made is the way the towers are, and that's kind of one of the things I've been doing, like with the V dot tower, is we can do structural analysis and you can plug and play those antennas. So as the P twenty-five sign changes, that tower can absolutely be used for whatever that next generation of radio is.
Would they have to come back to us to throw up different?
Yes, I believe, I believe, uh, York County requires a special use permit for the installation of additional antennas. So they, there would be a request for a new permit for any additional antennas going on there.
This type of system, we couldn't shut it down, right? If you, if we need to switch it out, say fifteen, twenty years from now, we'd have to put the new antennas on. Once that system are running, you take the old off, so that, that you would have to get, you know, authorization of the new antennas on there.
Under clear nighttime conditions, yeah, or would this be visible?
Are we visible?
So based on, based on some of our, our, our study, you really are not gonna be able to see it once you get a little bit further from, um, I'm trying to think of what the, that intersection of the road is on there, um. Cuz we didn't, we didn't actually do a balloon test where we would fly a balloon and, and actually look at it from various points. But, um, but where I would say it, it's gonna become almost invisible is once you get far enough that that, that grow the trees, at least going in that direction. And really, once you're going up the highway in the other direction, all those trees are gonna block all your visibility almost immediately. There really aren't gonna be many areas, unless you're going, you know, basically directly behind us. You'll probably have the best view from the, uh, from within the village itself.
There will be a light or something on top.
The, the tower in the village will not be lit. It does not have any lights. Um, it's only a hundred fifty-five feet, it's not required by the FAA. Um, the tower at Substone will have lights. Any tower over two hundred feet is required to be lit by the FAA. Um, so that one will have lights.
Are you familiar with the tower? You have the courthouse here, and you got three sixty, and then you got almost, almost just adjacent is another large tower. Are you familiar with that one? Like, why couldn't that one be used instead of having a new tower?
No, that's, that's a sub tower, that's the, the right. Um, well, the main reason we wanted here, we're, we're asking to use this one is because of the EOC and having connectivity into the EOC. Um, the other reason is to provide that connectivity across the way to the courthouse. Um, the other tower, we maybe have, may have been able to use to get connectivity across to the courthouse. But we need to have a location to add the equipment in at the EOC. So we would have to put in more equipment and more space on that tower. And that tower already has a lot of equipment on the tower itself. So it's, it's not as, um, it may not be able to support us adding the addition.
And what does the EOC stand for?
The Emergency Operations Center.
Certainly did when they did their design. You know, we find things like when they come out of the mine, like people do their path surveys, they actually walk paths. And you'll be surprised what interferes with the path, which, I mean, sometimes this would have caused us to have to add another tower to be a linkage, right? Because we couldn't get a clear shot to where our radio RF towers are. So a lot of work is, we've kind of played all this with us, right? What's the best thing we can do, being certainly respectful of, of what we're putting out in the county and being mindful of being physically responsible and getting that coverage to be, it's a balancing act, right? So we've done a lot of what it's in areas, and we feel like these are the towers of best choice.
Any other questions? Great questions.
No questions.
Also open the public hearing, I'm sure some other questions may come up in those citizens' concerns, so we may ask you back up to answer.
Absolutely. We will stay close.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. For those speak for or against the towers? But do you would like to speak for or against the towers? Either location? Mighty quiet. Any would like to speak for or against the towers? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Come back to us. Any more questions? Remote roll of people or county or? I mean, this is something we've been needing for a long time. And I, you know, somebody was asking Verizon or whoever has it, we don't have any service now. So I don't know if that's a possibility or not, but. Motion been made or second?
Second.
Made in second, any more discussion?
I appreciate the thoroughness of your, uh, presentation. Very beneficial, it makes it so that we don't have to spend so much time on questions.
Yeah, I mean, the visuals, I'm, I don't know how they got the tower standing there. I guess they put it on top of the, the grid. But they did it real good for us explaining the depth, so. Any other questions or comments? Most have been made in second. All in favor of motion making almost same eye? All opposed same time, motion carries. So you'll have more supervisors the third Wednesday next month. Third one is panned out. Agenda amendment. And that's the, uh, zoning amendment. About the listing of mining of minerals other than coal, especially exception use instead of a, a permanent use. You'd like to explain that? You said you've had some concern come before us, or before you maybe?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, when the property of Richardson Road was going through the rezoning process, particularly when it went before the board, there was some concern just over the uses permitted in M one and whether they were permitted by right or by special exception. And the main one that the board encouraged staff to look at and now coming before you to review is mining, um, of minerals other than coal. Currently, the M one allows that use as a by right use, meaning someone could, if they uh, bought or leased a M one property, they could activate that use today without any further review from the county. Um, however, staff is recommending, based on review, that it be changed to a special exception use. That way, if someone wanted to activate that use, they'd have to come for the planning commission and board to do so.
Any question for Brady?
I was curious, and it's might affect any old mines in the county?
A- any mines that are actively being used or uh, exist up to this point will fall under what's considered a non-conforming use authorization, so they'll retain that use authorization. So this would be for any new mines moving forward.
Would this be like the gravel, considering gravel or something like that?
Uh, tech- technically, it's, it's any, any minerals other than coal. So yes, I would, I would safely assume that gravel would be included.
Or rock, whatever.
Yep, rock.
Any other comments filed in the public hearing?
It's one of why it's coal place to decide.
Because I think when they, when they put it in there as a by right use, they definitely didn't want a coal mine as that by right use. So in terms of the terminology, that could be something that you recommend amending too. You know, you could just, uh, you could not only amend the listing to be a special exception use, uh, to be only authorized, be a special exception use, but you could also amend the title. If you, if you all wanted to recommend that to the board.
See, I can see it as a by right use where it says mining of minerals other than coal, that excludes coal.
It excludes coal.
Well, you move it over to special exception, don't you wanna say including coal instead of rather than?
We could do that.
I mean, or just remove other than coals. Any, any minerals. I mean, the way it's written, the way that the same term is used in the special permitted, special exception makes it look to me like coal was not, been done upon a coal.
Right.
The way it's worded.
Right.
Maybe the best thing to do, just take coal out altogether, any mineral.
Any more comments before we open the public hearing? Open the public hearing. Anybody like to speak for or against the zoning tax amendment change? Anybody like to speak for or against the zoning tax amendment change? Hearing none or seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. What's your recommendation from the committee? Taking coal? You know, with page, it's a different kind of perception as to what you're talking about. Do you want to take any metal? Or the second one, coal out always, or take just coal?
I move that we move it to permitted use by special exception and just have the wording of mining of minerals. But just strike that other than coal, so it just says mining of minerals.
Are you heard a motion is our second? Made in second. Any more questions about the motion?
I re-lectured a number of years ago. We did something with regard to I guess when some of this was put in here with the Ralph Whitaker property.
Didn't he come in for a special exemption permit, I think?
Something like that. But it did something to make it easier. And so I don't know, maybe that was the time this happened, but anyway, I.
That was the only time I can remember.
That, that's all about, only time I remember that's come before this ticket, it's come before planning commission.
Any other questions or comments? Heard the motion? Do you need to restate it? Heard all in favor of motion making almost ain't I? All opposed same side, the motion carries. Go to the board supervisor.
Mr. Morris, I know you were the motion. Who was the second on that motion?
Light.
Okay.
Anyone else have any new business? Only comment I had, I did get a call from a member of the county concerned they want to put some land in conservation on 360, on 360, on the east 360, and they had a comment two years back. Tried the same thing and we got in a letter that stated that it couldn't be done because of the comprehensive plan. I talked to Brady, my interpretation of what was written in the comprehensive plan was totally different than that. I assumed you put your land in conservation, it is not developed anywhere to this point. So I instructed him and talked to the resident. If you feel interested, contact Brady and we'd get the letter that he was fine for us. But you know, we try to keep the rule. Look. He got, you know, he don't have our building, building, building down through 60. So if y'all think it different than that, we need to get that straight from Brady. In case this man, a person does come before us, but I think it looks fine. I mean, I thought it was fine. It's not that, it's a pretty good size track of land. I forgot what the total acres was.
It's, I think it might be, it's less than 100, I think.
I was thinking 85, 90. The cornfield now, so. I don't see where it would hurt anything. They have, I mean, comprehensive plan says that the 360 hour will be higher than that level of development, industrial or, or in, in residential. But to have a little country stuck in there, that's why I don't think it would hurt anything. Yeah, I think it backs up against another conservation district.
I think if somebody's got some land and they want to put it in the conservation, even if they own it, I don't see where we're standing in the way of that.
I don't either, true. I just want to make sure that I wasn't stepping on y'all's toes. No, as long as they understand what you put in the conservation, so many people sign into it, you'll never get it back out.
Right.
That's the only comment I had or extra comments. I don't know of anything else. I'm not sure what we may have next month. I'm sure there's a cop plan. We're gonna have to do some revisions on that and that'll be coming before us at some point in time. But other than that, does anyone else know of anything else? Do you have anything, Brady, that you need to think about?
Not at this time, no, sir.
Well, I hope we get a letter from VDOT to help back the first request in there. And if that doesn't come, then the board do find out what to do. Thought they would put out in amendment that that was a concern. Thank you for coming out, Brady. See you next month if you have something. Not, we'll, I'm gonna tell you something. Thank you, guys. Everyone coming in the audience.